Hi Craig.
Yes.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Bless farming, a pledge of allegiance. Monday was Memorial Day, so I have a Memorial Day prayer. Heavenly Father, as we pause today to remember the sacrifices of our fallen heroes, we offer our prayers in comfort and peace. We give thanks for the brave men and women who have served our country, especially for those who gave their lives in service. We ask for your strength to be with those who are grieving their loss and for your guidance to all these who continue to serve. May we never forget the price of freedom and may we always strive to live in a way that honors and memory and memory of those who gave their all. We pray for peace in our world and for an end to conflict and violence. May your love and mercy guide us as we strive to create a more just and peaceful world. God bless America in Jesus' name. Amen.
On May 16, 2025, the acting county administrator approved for the Department on Aging the hiring of Jason Nelson to the position of full-time maintenance coordinator, number 1013, to be effective June 23, 2025, at the rate of $23.24 per hour with one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also approved was the hiring of Melinda Sue Whitaker to the position of part-time adult day service assistant, number 1041-1, to be effective June 2, 2025, at the rate of $19.23 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also, on May 16, the acting county administrator acknowledged for job and family services the following new hire appointments as the executive director of Job and Family Services, complied with the Board of Commissioners recruitment and hiring procedures for Amy Petrowski, clerical specialist three, replacement, effective March 18, 2025. On May 27, 2025, the county administrator amended for the Department on Aging the motion from May 15, 2025, to revise the start date to read, approved hiring Jason Nelson to the position of full-time maintenance coordinator, 1013, to be effective June 16, 2025, at the rate of $23.24 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon the successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. This is a few weeks.
Thank you. Item number three, Commissioner's office requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for meeting of April 22, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Hold on one second, Jamie, we missed number two.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're not doing this.
Oh, number two?
We missed that too, yeah. So that's the next.
So I'll cover that. On May 20, 2025, the county administrator approved traveling encumbrances from the Department on Aging to attend the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging Drive Train the Trainer Course and from the Clerk of Courts to attend the July 2025 Ohio Clerk of Courts Association meeting. Also approved on May 20 were the following vouchers: $72,534 from the Commissioners to Lake Geoga Recovery Centers for the jail treatment program being paid out of the opioid settlement fund; $9,109.25 from the Dog Warden to Cable Communications for the installation of security cameras at the shelter; $46,700 from the Engineer to Illuminati Labs LLC for the addition of T-Mobile to their distributed antenna cell signal enhancement system; $67,201.4 from the Sheriff to Motorola Solutions, Inc., for an event tied logging recorder for capturing, recording, and archiving 911 calls. And that is all.
Thank you. Item number four, Commissioner's office requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for special meeting of April 24, 2025.
So move.
Second. Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Yes. And item number five, the Commissioner's office requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 29, 2025.
So move.
Second. Commissioner Floyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes. Item number six, financials.
Oh, I have, uh, sorry, my, I haven't updated, uh, agenda. Oh, yes, I will. Yes, thank you. Adrian Gordon from the Commissioner's Office, um, here to discuss the, uh, the financials for today. Among the financials are a cash transfer from the Board of DD from their operating fund to the residential services fund for Medicaid waiver and locally funded services. Among the encumbrances are travel encumbrances from the County Police Court to attend the National Association for Court Management Promoting Public Trust and Confidence Conference; from the juvenile court to attend the 2025 Ohio Chief Probation Officers Association line officers training; and from the veterans to attend the summer and fall Commissioners Conference. There's also a contract, uh, purchase order from Maintenance to Duzen Bobcat North America Incorporated for the purchase of a new model year replacement skid steer loader, and I've been told the old one will be auctioned. Among the vouchers are $19,899 from the Auditor's Office to Integrity Appraisal Services for the 2025 new construction appraisal services; $8,453.14 from the Commissioner's Office to Destination Geoga for the first quarter 2025 bed tax distribution; and $145,793.99 from the Engineers Office to Southeastern Equipment for a new model Case 721G replacement articulated wheel loader, which is replacing a 2018 model that was traded in on the new one for $100,000.
I move to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
And the, the next item on the agenda is, um, these are the accounting and payroll authorization forms. So we're just updating them to include Amy on them. So I'll, I'll go ahead and read this. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the revised accounting forms, authorization form, and payroll authorization form for the Department on Aging, Building, Commissioner's Office, Community and Economic Development Department, Department of Emergency Services, Dog Warden Maintenance, and Department of Water Resources.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Carmel.
Hello.
Good morning.
So, we are re-
State your name.
Oh.
Go ahead, you part.
I'm Carmela Shale with the Geoga Southern Water Conservation District. I'm the Director and Engineer. Um, we are requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the 2024 Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program Cooperative Agreement between the Ohio Department of Agriculture and the Geoga County Board of Commissioners, who is a local sponsor, regarding funding to be allocated for the protection of Ohio farmlands against conversion to non-agricultural use in the amount of $110,554 for the acquisition of agricultural easements approved by the Ohio Department of Agriculture. And this is for the Hope Farm easement that we have got approved for, and we should be closing on in about a month here, in Thompson.
So just to make sure I understand the process. So the land remains privately owned.
Correct.
But they just promised not to develop it and to keep it as farmland?
Yes, exactly.
And then the $110-ish thousand, that comes from the state?
Ohio Department of Agriculture.
Okay.
Clean Ohio Fund.
Okay.
And that goes to the landowner?
Okay, perfect. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
No problem.
Um, so I'll move to approve number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And along with that, as I said, we'll probably be closing on the, this 2024, uh, easement for the Hope Farm. So we are requesting the board approve and authorize someone to execute the easement closing documents, including the Ohio Department of Agriculture assignment of payment form on behalf of the Geoga County Board of Commissioners for the 2024 Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for the Hope easement. And that would be going to the title office, signing all the papers.
So can we have Ms. Bevan do that? Can you handle that? Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve, um, nine authorizing, uh, Ms. Bevan to execute the documents.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Brean.
Aye.
Yes.
And I'll have that assignment soon, and then I can just bring it up. Thank you very much.
So Carmella, what is the current use then, or what are they farming there?
Um, Bob Lawson, uh, he currently farms and rotates it in various beans, corns.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Miriam Kiefer. I'm the Director of Public Policy at United Way of Greater Cleveland. Thank you for having me here today. I will be, um, by myself today. Unfortunately, Karen Perko is unable to join me today. Um, and I'll be talking about, um, United Way's, um, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed Report, um, also known as ALIS, and some of the data that it talks about, uh, for Geoga County. So every year, uh, United Way puts out, uh, a report that talks about, uh, those in our communities that, um, do not have enough income to make ends meet. And so this data go, it's drilled down, um, at the local level, um, at the county level, at the neighborhood level, at the state level, uh, and it goes beyond, um, the federal poverty data that we have. Um, the data at the federal level is, um, that number is the same regardless of where you live. So if you live in a lower or higher cost living area, um, the federal poverty line is, is the same. And so what the ALIS dataset does is that it looks at what the average cost of living is in a locality and whether or not individuals living in that locality have enough income to make ends meet. And it just looks at the basic costs of living: housing, food, um, healthcare, transportation. And then it also, um, provides some additional information for the type of household. So for families with young children, it adds, um, information on the average cost of childcare. For families with older adults, it adds information on, um, increased healthcare costs. Um, and so for, um, I'll talk, oh, just a little bit about the Ohio data, and then I'll talk specifically about the Geoga County data. Um, so for, uh, the state of Ohio, uh, if we just looked at data from, um, the federal government on the federal poverty line, about 14% of households in Ohio, um, are, um, below that federal poverty line. Yet when we look at the data from United Way, um, about additional 25% of the state, um, do not have enough income to make ends meet. So we're looking at about 39% of the entire state. Um, just to cover the cost of basics for a family of four in Ohio is $65,000. And for, um, two children, childcare, um, it's $79,000. Um, again, um, kind of trends over time in the state of Ohio. If we just look at the federal poverty line data, poverty has remained, um, relatively flat in the state of Ohio, which is, which is a good thing. Um, however, when we look at the ALIS data, um, that number tends to increase, uh, year over year. Um, in addition, at the state of Ohio, um, older adults, um, that, uh, are, do not have enough income to make ends meet, that number has, um, increased almost every single year, um, for the past decade. Uh, now for Geoga County specifically, um, again, when we look at the, uh, poverty data, um, only about 6% of the population is, uh, living below that federal poverty line. Um, yet when we look at the ALIS data, um, 22% of, um, the county, uh, does not have enough income.
Miriam, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How does the Amish population figure into that, those statistics for Geoga County?
That's a really wonderful question. When we break down the county data by neighborhood, um-
Oh, I did see that, that that's, that is, we're disproportionately-
Correct.
We see the amount of poverty is in Middlefield, Middlefield Village.
Correct. So 46% of the, um, of the households in Middlefield Village and 40% of the households in Middlefield Township, um, do not have enough income to make ends meet. We unfortunately don't have the data broken down by, um, you know, at that level, you know, identifying which households are Amish versus which are not, but we can kind of, um, get a sense of that through looking at the neighborhood data.
Yeah.
That's a really wonderful question. And then, um, just looking at, um, some demographics, so 39% of households with older adults, um, do not have enough income to make ends meet in the, uh, in the county. Um, just looking at, um, the average cost of just the basics in, in Geoga County, the data doesn't look very different than our neighboring counting county, Cuyahoga County. The cost of living is relatively the same. Um, housing, uh, is a little bit less in Geoga County because taxes are a little bit lower in, in Geoga County. Um, but, uh, and, um, but childcare is the highest cost, uh, for any, um, household budget in Geoga County at, uh, $1,900 a month for, um, two children and childcare. Um, that's higher than, um, housing, that's higher than food, um, for, uh, for a family's budget. Also, when we look at, um, we can break down the data by, um, employment sector as well. Um, for those working, um, in Geoga County in retail trade or manufacturing, um, they have, um, some of the highest, uh, percentage of workers, um, uh, who are, are working, working full-time, um, but not, do not have enough income to make ends meet. So 62% of, of workers, um, working full-time, uh, do not have enough income to make ends meet in the county. Um, and then when we look at, um, just, again, that family of four, uh, with two kids in childcare, that average cost is about $90,000 in Geoga County. Um, even if you have two, uh, workers working full-time in those two common jobs in the county, the most common jobs, retail trade and manufacturing, um, they would be about, um, $18,000 short or $17,000 short of, um, you know, sustaining, uh, their family. So, um, and then, uh, uh, just looking at housing as well, um, you know, as the cost of housing has increased, not only here in the county, uh, you know, with increases in property tax, but across the state, across the country as well, um, about, uh, 50%, a little over, uh, 60% of, um, owners are, um, uh, cost burdened. So they are spending over 30% of their income on, on, uh, housing. So their mortgage, utilities, uh, property tax, uh, things like that. Uh, and then just very quickly, how we use the ALIS data at United Way of Greater Cleveland. Um, we run, uh, for Geoga County, the 24/7/365 Information and Referral Line, 211, where individuals who are needing assistance with finding employment or needing, uh, trying to find assistance with, um, property taxes or social security, um, they can call our 211 line, 24/7/365. They're connected to a live individual who will help, um, help them, um, find, uh, local organizations that can assist them. Um, we served over 1,000, uh, Geoga residents in 2024 through our 201 program. Um, we also have a variety of initiatives that United Way funds in Geoga County, um, specifically helping, uh, ALIS households. So one is our Aging and Disability Resource Center. Um, in 2024, um, we, uh, we served, um, uh, over, um, 600 individuals by providing them with home-delivered meals. Um, we provided over 1,300 individuals with support services, such as helping them navigate social security benefits, Medicare benefits, and we also provided over, um, $25,000 in utility assistance, especially as it gets very cold or gets very hot.
Electric bills are gonna spike in June, too.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. Um, we also have our Bridges at Work program, where we partner with several businesses in Geoga County, where we provide, um, a $1,500, um, interest-free loan, um, and also provide, um, case management services through Catholic charities, um, where they provide financial education, credit counseling. And, um, this helps individuals who are facing a crisis. So it's either they're trying to get to work, their car breaks down, they don't have any money in savings, and so they're able to, um, work with us and their employer to apply for this interest-free loan. Um, the waiver loan is paid back, its deductions are taken out of their, um, out of their paychecks. And so, um, it gets automatically paid back. Um, and then, um, some of the great things about this program is that fewer employees are missing work because they're able to manage a crisis. And, um, this also gets reported to, um, the Credit Bureau, so it helps improve their credit score as well, and so helps, um, them lead on to a better path of financial success, rather than getting a payday loan or, or something like that. Um, the last area that we work on is, um, the Geoga Poverty Collaborative. Um, we fund seven organizations in Geoga County to provide up to, uh, $1,000 in one-time assistance, um, for individuals facing a crisis. Um, we collaborate with the Geoga County, uh, Job and Family Services, the Department of Aging, and the Adams Board. And we provide case management to ensure that further crises do not happen to end, um, continue to stabilize the family. Right. Um, and just how, um, the county can, uh, use the data. I'm again prioritizing, uh, policy proposals that, um, address the real cost of living, evaluate program eligibility thresholds, um, using the ALIS data as a benchmark, um, to analyze potential impact of legislation, uh, and then informing economic development and workforce strategies, um, integrating ALIS data into performance metrics for county-funded programs. Any, I know there was a lot of information very quickly, and I do apologize, I forgot to mention, um, you know, it's a really, uh, it's a pleasure and honor to be here today. I'm a Geoga County resident, I live in Russell Township, so it's, it's really great to-
Me too.
-be with you all. Wonderful.
Um, so I have tons of questions, but I'll keep it short, so my Commissioners don't start yelling at me. But, um, what trends have you noticed in the last, you know, five, 10, 15 years regarding poverty and ALIS data? Um, I know you said in Ohio, it looks like that, the poverty trends seem to be pretty flat, but what about, you know, in Geoga and Northeast Ohio?
Yeah, no, that's a really wonderful question. So for Geoga County specifically, poverty has, like the state, poverty has remained flat. Um, over, um, over the past decade, um, ALIS population has gone up and down, but since 2019, um, it has continued to rise slightly. Um, in Cuyahoga County, just as a comparison, very similarly, poverty has remained flat in Cuyahoga County, but the ALIS population has continued to rise in Cuyahoga County.
And do we think that's related to the cost in housing going up? And then just the cost of everything going up, right?
Correct.
Food and gasoline and-
Correct. So yeah, as the cost of just basic living has increased, wages have not kept up with that, um, with that inflation.
Okay. Um, and then what do, what do you think are some of the biggest obstacles in this county to getting people out of poverty or above that, that ALIS threshold?
Yeah, no, that's a really, that's a really wonderful question. I think, you know, part of it is, is that, you know, when we look at, just when we look at the ALIS data, um, uh, older adults in the county are, not only is the older adult population increasing-
Right.
Those that are, um, struggling to make ends meet continue to increase. A lot of older adults are on fixed incomes.
Right, right.
And when costs increase, you know, you're on a fixed income, there's not, there's not much, there's not much wiggle room to, to go. And so, some of the services that we provide, I think, are, you know, essential in helping older adults, you know, through our Aging and Disability Resource Center, but also the other, um, nonprofit organizations that we fund in, in the county.
Well, thank you for coming in today. I don't have anything else.
Thank you for having me. And I'll leave copies of the, um, the report and also the, um, Geoga County report as well.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the detailed report.
Thank you.
Should we skip to 12, since we're not at 10 yet? I feel like we can rip through ADP fast, right, Brian? Let's go. Let's go.
Let's take on item number 12. Commissioner Spiller, speaking. Frank Dancinucci, Automatic Data Processing Board. Um, item number 12, starting from a broken record, making the track up here. Um, item number twelve, starting from a broken record, making the trek up here, but we have another township that's looking to join the Joga Network. Um, we've discussed very lightly with Clergan, um, not the specifics necessarily, but obviously as the board is aware, before we can actually provide any services, we have to have an agreement. Um, so I don't know the extent of it, um, but they're great partners. Uh, Mr. Tyber, Mr. Cooper, uh, Mr. Miller, um, have been good people to work with, so we're very optimistic and excited about the opportunity.
Um, so I'll make a motion to approve number twelve.
Second.
Mr. Speller.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you all, yes.
You wrote some of those Hotmail emails from the townships.
Good morning.
Good morning. Item number thirteen, Shane Azure with the Engineer's Office. County Engineer's Office is requesting the board approve and execute a unit price contract with Ryan and Paving Incorporated for the reconstruction of Butternut Road, County Highway twenty-one, including the replacement of structure twenty-one dash zero zero point three two and the resurfacing of sections A through C in Munson Township in the amount of one million nine hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
Shane, what's the structure? Is that a bridge or?
Yeah, there's a bridge right there by Notre Dame, uh, school.
Yes, okay, got it. That's, that's what I assumed, but.
Yeah, we're realigning the road so Butternut will be the through road going forward.
I think that will be a, a great addition.
Do we have to buy any property to realign the road?
We did that last year.
I asked that question last time you came in.
Sometimes we gotta try and move these props for like a dollar.
It was a little more than a dollar this time.
Just wanted to make sure we have enough in the budget.
I think it's already done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, uh, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Speller.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good day.
Four minutes. Anybody here for me?
I have nothing.
Item fourteen.
This is their Ohio Department of Human Services, due to an agreement and funding application for, um, the twenty-five through twenty-seven. Um, we're, and my understanding is that it is due to the state.
What is the amount of the grant? I couldn't figure that out in the paperwork. I saw a lot of numbers, but it wasn't clear to me.
I couldn't figure that out myself. Either, uh, your books, as they have, because they have carryover balances that they can roll.
Right, that's why I was confused about.
So it looks as if their tentative base allocation for twenty-six is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and a tentative variable allocation from reclaim, um, two hundred and forty-five, thirty-nine, forty for three hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents for twenty-six. That they have a carryover for new services and reclaim a hundred fifteen thousand. With twenty-five percent of this bill year twenty twenty-four reclaim, the new service grant allocations of eighty-seven, five eighty-six, eight four. And then they have an exemption of twenty-seven, four thirteen. So then it says available program funds are five hundred and three thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars and forty cents. And then estimated program costs are four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-seven cents with unallocated funds of eighty-seven, four fifty-one, ninety-three.
So, so what are they gonna get? So it sounds like they have more money than they need?
So they're, yeah, I think they're asking for their program costs of four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-four and forty-seven. And that's for twenty-six.
For twenty-six, okay.
It's a two-year grant, so they'll have to come back with twenty-seven numbers.
I see.
Before that.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, but it'd be nice if someone could come in next time so we can ask questions and have them answered.
Ms. Speller.
Aye.
Ms. Norey.
Aye.
Ms. Nore.
Yes. Two minutes before ten o'clock.
Let's do fifteen. Come on, move. Let's gather, that's good.
Fifteen, item fifteen.
I don't think Daniel's here. This is the answer.
Item fifteen, the Building Department is requesting the board approve an unpaid personal medical leave of absence for Daniel Spada, chief building official during the period of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five through May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Speller.
Aye.
Ms. Nore.
Aye.
Yes.
That takes us right to ten o'clock, and then I've cited on this community developments regarding block, our programs, Cindy, our right.
Community Development, yes.
Time for our binders.
Morning.
Good morning.
You're doing a good job.
Oh, I have to swear?
Yes. So the first thing I may ask is for a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
All right, so I move to waive the mo- waive the reading of the legal notice.
Is that it?
Second.
Ms. Speller.
Aye.
Ms. Nore.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay.
It might be a benefit, I'm not sure.
I brought my binder.
You brought your binder?
All right, so I have to swear these guys out. Who would like to give testimony for the, uh, CDBG grant? Can you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Gina, raise your hand, too.
Anybody that is here today that may want to add things.
Okay. Do we have anyone with projects that wants to, um, talk about their project? Okay. All right, so I'll swear everybody, and do you swear to testify truthfully under penalty of perjury? Thank you.
Okay, so since we're not. Oh, Elaine Walcomacki, program coordinator, no, program manager, project manager. Uh, Community and Economic Development.
Good morning, Gina Hofstadter, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Got a lot of information. So since we're not reading the, um, public notice, um, we can just go directly into what projects we had submitted. Um, the first one is, uh, Public Services for Lake Joga Habitat for Humanity. Um, their project was to buy, um, a work truck. And their total project cost was fifty-six thousand dollars with up to thirty-six thousand dollars in CDBG funding and a twenty thousand dollar match. Um, their national objective was, uh, LMI, which is low to moderate income and limited clientele. Um, the second project we received was, uh, Public Certs- Facilities, uh, for Joga County Department on Aging. Their total project cost is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars with up to a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in CDBG funding and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar match. Um, their national objective is LMI Limited Clientele, and they were looking to purchase a generator, um, for one of the, uh, senior centers. Uh, number three is Public Services for Sharton Township. They would like to install a walking trail at their park, um, to make it more handicap accessible, um, getting all the way back to some of the ball fields, the pond, and things like that. Uh, their total project cost is a hundred thousand dollars and they are seeking a hundred thousand dollars in CDBG funding. Um, their national objective is ADA accessibility. Um, project number four is, uh, Private Rehab for Maple Leaf Community Residences. Uh, their project is five generators at five of their homes, um, that they run for, uh, individuals with disabilities. Uh, project, total project cost is seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars in CDBG funding, and they are seeking all of that in CDBG funds. Um, their national objective is LMI Limited Clientele. Project number five is Public Services, uh, for Burton Public Library. Their elevator needs, uh, modernization, um, pretty bad. All of their meeting rooms, all of their handicap accessible bathrooms are on their second floor, and I think that the elevator is pretty unpredictable. Um, so, yeah. So they are, they are looking, um, for, their total project cost is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And they are looking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in CDBG funding, uh, with a seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollar match. Um, their national objective is ADA accessibility. Project number six was the Joga County Agricultural Society, and that is a public service project. Um, they are looking to install five, um, bathrooms at the south. I believe it's the south, um, bathroom, it's by the riding arena. Um, and they are looking to make one ADA shower, and the other four would just be, uh, regular showers. Um, and they are looking for a total project cost of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred dollars, all in CDBG funding. Uh, the national objective is ADA accessibility. And the last project that we received was, um, Private Rehab. It is the DDC Clinic for Special Needs Children. Their total project cost of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in CDBG funding. Uh, they are looking to expand their parking lot. Currently, their lot, I think it has twenty-four spots, and they are looking to put parking in the back. Um, people are parking on the sides and on, on, you know, in the grass, and it's hard to get in and out of there. So they were looking to put parking in the back, and their national objective is LMI Limited Clientele. And then the following are administrative allocations. We would be asking for forty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars to manage that, um, grant, and our fair housing, um, we are looking for ten thousand dollars to continue with our programming and brochures and all of that for fair housing. And this is the second of our two public meetings. So, um, any questions, any statements?
Can we go through, um, just really briefly the scoring matrix and what these, these different things mean?
Okay, so when we scored these projects, um, it is safety, health, welfare, feasibility, uh, readiness to proceed, permitting. Um, and we have added the previous funding. So if you did have previous funding, we would take, you would not get a total of three points. If, if you were last year's funding, you would get one point. If you were the previous cycle, you could get two points. If you haven't had any, you've got three. Um, so the, we can choose two projects. The two projects that came out at the top for us were Burton Public Library and the Sharton Township Walking Trail. Um.
Can I, can I ask, so why was the Sharton Township Walking Trail, why was that a zero on feasibility?
Uh, because that was, um, they, they do not have their, um, architectural yet.
Okay.
So we would have to go out and get, get an, uh, engineer.
Just like project readiness, things like that. We could wait on that.
I got you. I mean, I was like, it seems feasible to me.
Yeah. No, it's feasible.
One of those tricky words.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah. I actually figured it was more of a term of art.
Yeah, it's just, we would have to go out and get engineering, so it's not a white-ready.
Yeah.
But we can do that.
Okay.
So.
Understood.
But those two came out at the top, um, basically, it, it was safety, health, welfare, um, for, um, ADA clients. Um, and they both had a larger population almost that they would serve, um, as far as helping out individuals.
Yeah, it's so important, for sure. Not that any of these aren't, but.
Right.
That's definitely has some weight to it.
Right. And then the Joga County Department on Aging, the DDC Clinic, and the Maple Leaf Community Residences all came out, um, with seventeen points. So they were all a really close third together. Um, and then Lake Joga Habitat for Humanity came out with twelve points, and the Agricultural Society came out with ten points. So.
Well, I want to compliment you guys for creating this process.
Thank you.
Because like five years ago, it wasn't this detailed, it was, you know, the metrics wasn't, you know, that.
Quite there.
Quite there yet.
I'm trying to get, like, make myself understand.
Trying to get there.
So once I can.
The binder like this.
We want the binder back, just so you know. We have a tight bunch of.
It was, it was very helpful, though. I appreciate it.
Great, I'm glad, I'm glad.
And the maidens as well. I don't have any further questions. What about you guys? Do you want to give people a chance to talk that came?
Yeah, anybody in the audience who'd like an opportunity.
Want to explain your project?
If I, if I might have misspoken.
They can really sell it, I'm sure.
Well, it's something that's been on the wish list for a long time.
State your name, please.
Oh, that's right. Bertima B. McConaughey, Sheriff of County Creston. It's been on our wish list for a while. Um, we have a pretty decent park up there, everybody's been buying Auburn and Meadow Road. This will, uh, this will add another piece to the pie. We applied like two, two or three as well.
The last cycle, yeah.
We were close.
They were, they were ranked the next. They were number three.
Again, because we can't do four, we're only, you know, we can only do the two now, it, it, it does skew things a little bit, so.
Better be moved up.
And these projects for this wave of funds will happen next year about this time.
It'll be. We'll get our release of funds in, in February, and then we can start our projects. So I'm hoping to do twenty twenty-six, these projects will can be completed. We have through October of twenty-seven to complete them, so if anything goes wrong, we still have time, but I'd like to get them done next summer. Yeah.
Burton Library, would you want to say a couple words?
And we ring a bell for Burton Public Library, and I will say, this elevator.
Just not go off the channel.
Probably for like twenty minutes, so, um, we have been fundraising for years and saving for years and moving targets, because every time we get, just keep getting more expensive, so, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the elevator.
We have two elevators in Burton Village, incidentally. One make possible third, but I just don't think that's township, so is the red maple land in the library?
You guys thought about doing like a tower.
They are not fun. Many of days we had people stuck in that.
What I like about your project that's coming up, it's, you're gonna be using it twelve months out of the year.
That's it, yeah.
And that's important, and the library and, um, everything else that goes on in that building, so.
Yeah. And their funding, their fundraising, they had, I know she had said that they had been fundraising for quite a while.
They worked very hard.
And like she said, it keeps getting more expensive, so, you know.
I appreciate that. I, yeah, and I liked, I liked seeing, you know, what the organizations were willing to contribute as well.
Right.
I think that makes, to me, that makes their project more attractive. They're ready to go, and they've done work to try to get it there.
And in reality, I mean, your, um, Department on Aging, DDC Clinic, Maple Leaf, they've all always been able to contribute.
Yeah.
Um, in the years past, um, any overages, they've always covered.
Okay.
They do have to provide a letter, um, that any overages they will cover, um, their mix with their match fund, so, yeah.
Got it. Jessica, did you want to say anything about?
Oh, sorry, yes, uh, we were, we were looking for a generator out of a senior center. I was certainly when the tornado, uh, came through, you know, last year was quite an eye-opening moment. And, uh, not only do we serve six hundred and eighty-four individuals at the senior center, um, put out one thousand ninety-four congregate meals and seven thousand five hundred home-delivered meals with the Level Three Commercial Kitchen, also the septic system and the pump station, um, upgrades from that center. So having a generator would keep everything running, not only for senior citizens, but in the case of an emergency, we could use that as a, as a public facility, um, to help the community. So that's like a wonderful project, um, for us to move forward, uh, on, you know, certainly with what happened last summer. Um, but, you know, we have been blessed that we've been able to receive, um, CDBG funds in the past, so, you know, we did want to throw our hat in.
Yeah, why not?
For this project, uh, as we think it would be very, very helpful.
Okay, so do we need to move out of the hearing? How does that work, Chris?
If there's any, no other comments or questions?
Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none.
We close the public hearing at ten thirteen AM.
So now we move to sixteen. Look how that looked out.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, so can I make a motion now to the, for the projects? So I'll make a motion, uh, for the Burton Public Library project and the Sharton Township project with the Department on Aging and the DDC Clinic as the two alternates.
Second amendment.
Ms. Speller.
Aye.
Ms. Nore.
Aye.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Okay.
That was definitely, that wasn't so bad. Okay, so that was number seventeen, um, to select the two projects and rank the additional two. Um, item eighteen on the agenda is the Community and Economic Development Department. We are requesting the board approve and execute. We are requesting the board approve and execute the Geogu County Citizens' Participation Plan in regard to PY twenty twenty-five CDVG allocation program.
Just for correction.
Yes.
There's a different agenda on the table.
We have an updated agenda.
Oh, I'm looking at my wrong one.
Yeah, okay, we do have to go down.
Okay.
Did you do sixteen, sixteen, right?
We did sixteen.
We did sixteen.
I just, oh, I said eighteen, didn't I?
Yes.
Seven times, citizens.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So it, the, what is this, a resolution and agreement? Agreement states that you have consulted with various Native American tribes?
That's number nineteen. That's my state historic.
Oh. Oh, wait a minute, where are we now?
We are number seventeen.
Okay, hold on.
That's okay.
That's nineteen.
It's our citizens' plan. The citizens' participation plan requires us to do the two public hearings. We need to, it's, we have to follow that to make sure that townships are consulted. They call it our CDIS, it's our workshop, we call it our workshop that we hold and we invite all the townships and everything like that for participation.
Okay.
Get a motion?
Second.
Commissioner's vote?
Aye.
Commissioner's break.
Aye.
Commissioner's vote?
Yes.
So then we will go to number eighteen and Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number Twenty-five dash one-two-sixth, the Community Development Black Grant and Home Program Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance for PY twenty twenty-five allocation program.
Okay, so this one I had some questions on. So it says that, so what qualifies as an LMI dwelling?
So we would, if, if we went in to do rehab or demolition in an LMI building, they would have to income survey, which we don't really do demolition.
That's what I was confused about.
Right, the CDVG, exactly.
Okay, because I, it made it seem like if there was any demolition, like if some private entity wanted to demolish an LMI building, then we'd have to come in.
No, no.
We don't play that arena.
If the private entity wants to do it, the rules are totally different.
All right, made me sweat, although we're not reading this.
For sure.
Because you have to pay those people money.
You have to pay them.
Like if we wanted to use the money to buy property where people were living and they were considered low to moderate income.
Okay.
We would have to relocate them, we would have to pay to relocate them.
But that's a, I mean, that's a non-issue with these.
That is a non-issue with our project.
I'll move to approve eighteen.
Second?
Commissioner's vote?
Aye.
Commissioner's break.
Aye.
Commissioner's vote?
Yes.
And this one is the one for questions. So Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the programmatic agreement for coordination between Geogu County and Ohio's State Historic Preservation Office for the administration of programs using HUD allocated funds with delegated reviews responsibilities authorized under twenty-four CFR Part Fifty-Eight. So this, do you want to ask your questions or would you like?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
This one where?
No, yes, so it says, yeah, it says you consulted with the Geogu Historical Society, the Shawnee Tribe, the Miami Tribe, okay, so.
Yes, there was four tribes, they were all in Oklahoma. I sent out the agreement and email. Well, they, so.
I maybe, we don't need some.
The Miami Tribe, the.
They were.
I don't know, yeah. So.
They were here first.
I just did a training on this and it was really informative because you don't think a lot of, a lot of the Western tribes had kind of absorbed the tribes that lived in our areas. And what they find quite a bit is not burials directly, but like the mounds that they built.
Yeah.
They have maps that they lay over and when, mostly this is for historic buildings. If you want to renovate or to take down a historic building. But anything that disturbs the ground, I would put this project one oh six application in. And they will look at the whole area and say, nope, they're good to go, or yep, there might be something in this area. And then there might be a little bit more that we have to do in that area.
Some sort of ritual.
Since we don't, since we don't really do projects that disturb the ground.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's kind of a moot point, but Brownfield, I, I did, you know, I'm doing the Brownfield through them right now and the one demolition agreement, I just put both houses through just to be on the safe side there, even though they weren't. But if any house is over forty-five years, and they tell you, you know, like if you replace your roof in kind, it's okay. If you replace your windows, you need to get that looked at. If you need to do any digging, you have to get that looked at. And it's just so we're not destroying our heritage and our culture and, because you never know what might be there.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve nineteen.
Second?
Commissioner's vote?
Aye.
That's number eight.
Aye.
Yes.
Ooh. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions at all?
Can we just give out money every week? I like that, I know, me too.
We appreciate your effort and time today.
Yeah, thanks for looking at the binders and. Yeah, thanks for all your work on those, we can tell you put a lot of effort into it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow.
We get to give away money.
But it's good, there's a theme going on today, I feel like. So Craig Swenson from John County Job and Family Services. I'm here to talk about, we submitted a resolution for you guys to hopefully recognize and approve. It's been written, but talking about recognizing June as Elder Awareness Month. You know, there's even knowing, Geogu County is obviously a wonderful county, we're definitely not immune for, you know, elder awareness and abuse neglect issues. Last year, and it's in the resolution, and this is, these are actual investigations, not just calls. We had a hundred and ten elder abuse neglect investigations where we have crews on the ground out in the community following up with concerning calls. These are screened in cases that meet metrics requiring us to screen them in and investigate. If you think about that, it's one every three days. So it's a, it's a concerning issue, you know, even knowing, obviously, we are one of the more, you know, well-to-do and affluent counties in the, in the community. But one of the concerns that the ladies from United Way kind of hit on is, you know, we obviously don't have a lot of rental property in, in the community. A lot of people have homes, they've established, they've lived here, they may have paid off their mortgage, but then they go on to fixed incomes and, you know, but they want to stay in their home, it's been their home, it's their family home, it's where all their memories are, but they can't keep up with it and it turns into a self-neglect situation where the home starts, you know, falling apart, things aren't kept up, you're not as mo, the people there that are living aren't as mobile. And I'm sure Jessica knows very well.
She's nodding her head in that, you can't see it.
Yeah, yeah, her eyeballs are like coming through my eyeballs. And so, you know, there are definitely issues of significant concern and we have to balance their dignity and respect and the fact that it's their, their home property with the same time as wanting to protect them from themselves. And so, and us being involved can oftentimes, even though we're trying to save and help someone, it can also be traumatic for them. And so it's a very delicate balance and I will, you know, commend Jessica's staff along with, because we work very, very closely together with the Department of Aging, with our social worker and their social work staff. And, you know, it's that dignity and respect, but also balancing the same time that we need to help these individuals. And so we pool our resources, but I will tell you, we are limited on our resources that we get from the state. The state doesn't even, I mean, we have a supervisor and team full-time social workers, but the state only really gives us enough money to fund one of those positions. And we have to use other dollars to supplement that. And one of those that we do is our social services block grant funds that we get from the feds, which, you know, can be, we're a little concerned about if it's going to be involved with any of the federal budget cuts that could be coming up with the big beautiful bill. It is something that we are, I am really monitoring closely because we receive about eight hundred thousand dollars through social services block grant that goes to fund that as well as several other very significant organizations, including Women Safe and many others that we have out there. So that's something I've been monitoring, I know you were just in DC, but, and I believe that social service block grant is preserved in the House budget, but we know that the Senate may take a different look at it. So it's to be determined, but I have been in contact with Congressman Joyce just about advocating for that. There is an event that I just want to mention to you guys. It's on June fourth, it's the Live Well Festival at Claret and Woodlands Lodge. And we'll be there, but it's a, there's going to be free health and wellness. It's, it's really an event for individuals that are fifty and over to attend, it's free. There's a health and wellness vendors, free health screenings there. That's again, June fourth from eleven to three PM and again, we'll be there. As you probably saw, Gina Schultz was here, but she had to go for an interview, so she apologizes that she wasn't able to stay, but.
For another job or?
Yeah, no, no, not, she better not be interviewing herself, but no. And we continue to be very active in other community-related organizations. Our supervisor is on the board of C-three-A, which is a consortium of, I believe it's Lake Geogu, Portage, who else is it, Lake Geogu, Portage, Ashdabula, but we kind of pool resources. She's on the board of that, they have conferences, so we're really trying to keep up with our best practices and trying to keep a pulse on what's going out, not just in our community, but our neighboring communities, because, you know, we, it's kind of related with what we're seeing. But the cases are on the rise, our investigations thus far for this year are trending to be above the one-ten number that I.
And where are you getting like the calls from? Are these like family members that are calling?
It can be, I mean, it's, it's the gamut. It can be family members, neighbors is, is a big one. Yourself? Because they're in their, they go in their homes and so, but where the investigative tool can be from the sheriff's department, it can be from banks, where people are concerned. Just a few years ago, they expanded the refer, mandated referral statute.
Okay.
For elder abuse. So it indicated more in people that are going to be mandated reporters, which include numerous financial institutions because you have a lot of situations where you may have a neighbor that's like, hey, let's, you know, and they may take advantage. Let's go to the bank, I can help you, you know, do what have you, and they're like, sure, and the next thing you know, you have someone taking thousands of dollars from individuals, so. Courts, I mean, it really can be anyone that could be calling in, but it really is the gamut. But I will say, Department of Aging is, is a big one because again, you have the Meals on Wheels and they get delivered and they are in the home and they can see issues.
Absolutely. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-five dash one-two-seven.
Second?
Commissioner's vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Morning. Just walk that way.
You're much appreciated.
Morning. Charles Teecatch, Maintenance Department, I have two items on the agenda this week. Number twenty-one is the Maintenance Department is requesting the board acknowledge the statement of qualifications on file for Professional Design and Contract Administration, including LDA Architects Incorporated, SME and Anverdantis LLC, and select LDA Architects Incorporated as the most qualified firm in accordance with ORC one fifty-three point six-nine A for the kennel expansion and renovation at the Geogu County Animal Shelter Building, and further authorize the department to begin contract negotiations in accordance with ORC one fifty-three point six-nine B.
I move to approve.
Second, is there a max not to exceed on this or?
Our budget is two hundred and fifty thousand.
Your budget for the whole project?
Yes.
But for the architect?
Oh, for the architect, I'm sorry. It's, it'll be under fifty thousand.
For the architect?
Yeah, well, it, it is between twenty-five and fifty, so it is the medium range, if you will.
For how many kennels?
Well, it looks like there's going to be, the expansion of the ones that are there plus the ones, I think it's a total of twenty, or somewhere around there. But we won't know that until the engineering is done, because whatever takes the two hundred and fifty thousand is what's going to be recommended.
So let me ask you a question on this, because I'm starting to really struggle with these numbers that we're putting out there with this, with this architect stuff. You mean to tell me fifty thousand dollars potentially this architect can go up to, to, to design kennels?
Well, we are reaching out to this architect, we don't know their fee yet. We are, under, under the code, we are not permitted to discuss fees. We're only able to say small, medium, and large. Medium is between twenty-five and fifty.
Who set that number?
The, the ORC. It is, it is written into the ORC.
I, I mean, and I guess, so, so, so that I'm clear, so you're, we're going to award, we're going to award this to, to this, to this architect company?
We're going to start contract negotiations, we're not awarding anything yet. We're going to come back to you with the price once we get a price, but we can't talk about price until we identify them as the most qualified firm.
Okay. Because I, I'm just, you know, this is a, this is a, this is a, a number that we put forward to be sure that the, you know, that the the kennel gets taken care of and that the, the right thing is done. And to start losing money administratively for, for something like this, I guess it just, it's really difficult to watch some of these dollars that are going out to this, to, to these other services. And I understand that it probably needs to be done in the public side of things. But I think that there, there's got to be a real look at. And then, you know, the other thing is, is what, what's the, have you guys looked at other kennel companies that actually do this as a service of building kennels? Or are we just looking to construct and have, you know, multiple contractors come out and put fences and gates and everything else? Because possibility that there's a, there's a, there's a plan out there or there's a company out there or companies that could bid against each other that have, you know, turnkey, you know, availability to do something like that, that this cost is, is, is not, not even an issue.
Right, we are looking at both options. We're looking at the option to expand the existing kennels and build them out. And then we're also looking at an option to purchase kennels and integrate them into the facility. Both of those require HVAC work, water work, I mean, all those things are required in order to, you know, no matter which path you go. So we are looking at both options and we will bring the best option and the best price that we can for the, you know, for the budget of two fifty.
I, I guess, you know, in, you know, is it, are we at a, are we at a point that we have so many of these, so many of these projects that come up that we bring our own architect on board? You know, because when you start to look at what we're spending in money between all of these projects, I mean, you know, the project that was over at the auditor's office for, 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 for something that's less than the size of, of a single car garage that we spent, how much was, was that number, over sixty thousand or something if I'm staying corrected? You know, and so now we have a potential of another fifty thousand here, that's a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars. You know, and, and, and I, I think that there's the potential that we're really missing something here when we're throwing this kind of money out. Because if, you know, if, if, if the general public would be doing projects like this and spending this kind of money, I don't think that you could do anything if you had to, if you had to hand out this kind of money for every, every little thing that we do. And I think that truly it's something that we need to look at as far as professional service to possibly bring in-house.
I, I, I do think one of the things we have to weigh with that is that if you bring one in-house, you're only going to get so many projects done a year. Currently, we have fifteen projects currently in engineering, just in the Maintenance Department. So you're not going to get fifteen if you own, you know, if you hire somebody in.
If you hire one person.
You might get one or two projects a year, right?
Yeah.
So that, that's just something, you know, that's something to consider to weigh the options of the number of projects versus.
Yeah, probably the number of projects kind of waxes and wanes too. You're probably going to have some days, or some years where you have a lot of projects, others where you don't. I mean, it's just like legal costs are the same thing, right? Sometimes things are hot, sometimes they're cold.
And really, I think that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the shelter, I like to see all of that two fifty go into actually helping the shelter improve.
Right.
But in the last year or two. But in the last year or two, the, uh, Dog Ward Department has received one, possibly two estates, that the family has passed away, and-
Right.
-were received like seventy thousand and fifty thousand here and there, so maybe that money could be used for engineering, so we can have the impact of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars towards the dog shelter.
Yeah, I think Glenn is looking into that, I did mention that to him, so he is looking into that, that extra money, if there is some there. Um, and we are looking for it to be closer to twenty-five, if that helps, only, only because it's usually about ten percent of the budget, but we won't know until we actually sit down.
I'd like to call a question.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, item number twenty-two, the Maintenance Department is, is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for bids for the Giaga County Safety Center Visitation Room Alteration Project to be held on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, at two P M. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, June sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and on the county website.
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did your foot fall asleep back there, Glenn?
No, not at all, me, morning, y'all.
What'd you do to yourself? What'd you do to yourself? You're limping up here.
That's age.
Okay. You had to sit too long, this meeting's going too long, are you?
Y'all working me too hard. Uh, number twenty-three.
State your name, Glenn.
I'm sorry, Glenn Vernick, uh, Jug County Maintenance Department. Uh, number twenty-three is the playground out back here. What's happening is the fence is melting, it's a plastic that goes around the whole playground equipment. Um, it's melting, and what that's coming from is the sun is shooting off the windows back down onto that fence. So, that's not part of the warranty, uh, we did extensive, uh, we sent the fence back to the company and everything, so it's, 'cause that's a nature thing, um, it's not part of the warranty, so we did a lot of research, uh, found another piece uh, that should hold up, uh, they're saying it's highly, highly, that'll work, so, and that's what this is for, the twelve-thousand-six-hundred dollars.
Did you explain to the manufacturer that we live in Ohio?
Yes.
Like, how is fence melting in Ohio?
It's, what is, sun is coming off of the window.
Yeah.
Um, and it's-
It's wild, it's like frying an ant, kinda, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it's something that's very, very unusual, I guess, uh, they were telling me about a story in Houston, Texas or something, many years ago, where, uh, one of the buildings was all glass, and it was melting stuff down there, uh, so it's-
How much did we pay for this fencing initially?
That, off the top of my-
I mean, I probably don't really wanna know.
Well, the, the playground was donated.
Yeah. We're replacing the fence after three years.
So, this, the new one is like a metalish, and it's gonna almost look exactly like what's down there now.
Same color scheme.
Yes.
Um, so I'll move to approve twenty-three.
Yes.
Uh, number twenty-four is for one of our, uh, employees, um, needing some unpaid time off, leave of absence, so that's what I'm, uh, asking for your permission for here.
Um, so I'll move to approve twenty-four.
Hi, thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Nick Goris, Water Resources, uh, first item for us on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and execute an agreement between the Commissioners and Gudtowski and Associates Incorporated for Engineering Services, uh, for land planning, surveying at various locations, twenty-five thousand in wastewater, ten thousand dollars in the water, uh, part of that twenty-five thousand dollars that we're using with that will be for the extension of the sanitary sewer for, um, the youth center.
Um, I move to approve twenty-five.
Yes.
Next item, uh, is requesting the Board approve a contract maintenance form number one, extending the service contract with first for roofing and siding for an additional eight months through January seventh, twenty-twenty-six, in the original amount of forty thousand dollars, uh, basically extending their existing service contract.
Ah, so I'll move to approve.
The next item is requesting the Board approve a, and execute a contract maintenance form, increasing the service contract with Firehouse Eight Extinguisher Service L L P in the amount of four thousand dollars, and extending the length of the contract for one year through March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-sixth. Uh, they're holding their pricing, uh, that we used last year for extinguisher and fire services and testing throughout our facilities.
I move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
The next item is approve a contract maintenance form, increasing the service contract with C U E Excavating Contractors L L C in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the wastewater side, now thirty-five thousand dollars, and an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we use C U E for certain excavating contracts or maintenance areas, um, we used up the contract to appoint on our Pilgrim Village list station, so this is leaving us some space for the next thing that comes up.
I'll move to approve.
Uh, the next item is requesting the Board approve and authorize, uh, Ralph Spitalary, authorized representative, to execute the O W D A fund payment request number one for the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Projects for the technical services provided by H D R Incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents, this is a reimbursement back to us. We've already actually paid this invoice, so this is our reimbursement, it'll, it'll all fall on the loan anyways, so, but- Uh, next item, uh, it's, it's very similar, authorize Ralph Spitalary, authorized representative to execute the O W D A fund payment request number two for H D R, um, for the same project, in the amount of fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents for technical services related to the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Project. This next item is actually a housekeeping clarifying, um, uh, a, a direction to match actual cost that occurred. So, basically, increase to the temporary water permit application fee from fifty dollars that was listed in our twenty-twenty-two fee pay table to a hundred and fifty dollars with a retroactive date of April first, twenty-twenty-four, an increase from one hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars with an extra, with a retroactive date, uh, from May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, back in April last year with our, um, bulk haulers, our temporary haulers, the cost that we were expending to actually provide that service didn't align with what we were charging. Um, I made a change, I did follow-through with the, uh, paperwork to update the fee to bring it to you, so that's where the first one comes into play, and then this next one, effective May nineteenth, is another increase based on requirements, and for us to do this to meet E P A requirements, so that increases the fee again. So, basically, this is an action in case of, you know, that supports those changes and those fees, it's a no-dollar retro fee thing, it's just a housekeeping audit.
Okay, so it's a significant increase, but your, your costs are aligned with those increases?
Our costs were, we weren't even, we were donating, basically, over the years of the time that we would send our guys out to put the box on, go out, do meter reads, you know, um, and these bulk water haulers, they're, they're providing a great service, but they're making more off of that water than we are, uh, when they provide it to fill in a pool, and, uh, for our guys that could be doing other items, we're basically, I'm sure aware of, looking at every single penny that we have coming in and out of that door, and this is one of those areas where I said, you know, we need to make sure we're covering our own, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, so I move to approve thirty-one.
Yes, and then the final item on the agenda aligns with the same one, this is an additional, uh, permit equipment setup fee to the list previously approved, um, retroactive to May nineteenth. Uh, this setup, the equipment setup fee of five hundred and fifty dollars covers the cost of installation, backflow testing, and removal of temporary fill stations, um, basically, again, falling in line with E P A. At one point in time, we were, but we weren't allowed to do this, so, um, kind of affected some of the local businesses, what they do. The E P A said if you do X, Y, and Z, and one of the things that, we weren't always, it was, was testing that backflow device, um, that to prevent any water back and into our water system, so that's part of that, uh, cost that we need to hire, uh, a professional service to come out and do that backflow testing for us. We've already allocated for that, um, you know, in one of our service providers, so this is just being able to cover that cost, pass it straight through.
I move to approve.
Thank you very much.
Question?
Yes, sir.
What's the estimated timeframe for shoveling from the ground at, uh, McFarland?
Uh, four weeks ago.
Okay.
So, uh, basically, McFarland, we're almost at, by the end of this week, we should be cut down to grave. Um, actually, it's for the headworks and the, uh, clarifiers, so we'll be at final grade. Um, they're actually, the following, we can start digging for the new headworks building, which is, you know, starting to put the shoring in and the gripping in to go down thirty feet, so it's, it's active, we're completely active there, I've already been into, uh, they've torn down the existing grit building, it's gone. Um, and then they're now into the original, uh, sand filter building, um, that has been taken offline a long time ago. Uh, they're gonna start dismantling that, of which that building will be repurposed actually into modern disc filters. Um, so that whole building will be redone, and we'll have disc filtration inside there, so we'll start that this week.
I have to connect with you, in the next month or two, I'd like to go up to the job site.
Absolutely, absolutely, it's, uh, it's pretty active, we'll have a hard hat for you, and, uh-
I have my own.
You want photos, I understand all that.
Yeah, it's, it's-
It's a shiny shovel.
Okay.
So you'll come out to that.
No, but, yeah, it's, uh, it's-
You have all those shiny shovels.
It's, it's a big, it's a, it's a big project, and it's actually nice to see it. It's been a long time coming, so to see it actually moving, um, we're actually spending dollars and, uh, uh, putting it to good use, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Linda Perhenny, Assistant County Administrator. The next three items are things that should be completely comfortable for you, because I've been keeping you apprised as we've gone along with the courthouse. Um, they are the three change orders that I told you were coming. Number thirty-three is the purchase of the baggage scanner, um, we had to get that approved by A D P. This, um, and it is not part of the Infinity contract, it was always going to be outside that contract, so, um, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number seven, increasing the contract G M P Phase One and Phase Two with Infinity Construction Company, remember, they're covering it for us. We threw it into the project. On the courthouse expansion project deducting for the addition of ordering and overseeing the installation of the baggage scanner not covered in the original contract in the amount of fifty-four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars.
I move to approve.
Um, item number thirty-four, this is a, um, combination of a number of little changes, but in the aggregate, this is actually a decrease in the contract of eighteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number eight, decreasing the contract G M P Phase Number One and Phase Two with Infinity Construction on the courthouse expansion project for the removal of speakers, network equipment, and transaction windows, along with the addition of a clerk and finance counter and additional window shades not covered in the original contract in the amount of minus eighteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars, and extending the substantial date of completion by an additional twenty-two days through October tenth, twenty-twenty-five. So, that's the new date of substantial completion for the courthouse addition. Doesn't change the amount of the contract, but they wanted you to know.
So, where are the speakers and the network equipment, where is that being removed from? Is that all part of that same clerk's window?
No, I think this is, um, has to do with, um, it may be like a witness room, or a, um, like a conference room, small conference room. These are things that are all mixed up with the, with the, um, A V system, and the judges, and the court I T, and, yeah, I don't really know the details that much, but they did remove things at the request of the court.
Now, I mean, that was what I wanted, to just make sure that this is-
Oh, yes.
What, what they want, or given them what they-
I'm trying to get them to what they want, and, and there's gonna be further discussion on that in future days, but, um, we're getting closer all the time.
Okay, so I move to approve.
Let me ask you one quick question, so, back on this scanner issue, a minute, um, so you said A D P approved this?
Yeah, we, we had to go to the A T B, A D P Board to have the purchase approved.
And, and, and based on what? Because isn't this a security item?
Yes.
Why wouldn't the sheriff be the one approving this?
Well, he did.
Okay.
And he's the one that selected the equipment, and, uh, they went back to him and they added, did some additional software with it, but because it touches the network, sometimes even if it doesn't touch the network, we're required to get A D P approval for things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirty-six, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board, wait a second, we need to do number thirty-five.
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is the roof, what happened with the roof is, when they went to attach the new building to the old building, and they had to open it up in the roof area, they found that the roof on the old courthouse was more deteriorated than they expected. And so, this is to, to repair and correct the, the deterioration to the old courthouse roof where it attaches to the new addition. We actually went back and looked, the roof is nineteen years old.
So, it seems like this is just one section of the roof, though, so is, why are we not just replacing the whole roof?
I can't answer that, I am aware there was discussion of it, and there was a price given, and then for some reason, they, that was removed from the project. It may have been because of concerns about the increasing prices associated with the project. I think it was gonna be like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or something to the whole roof.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want us to spend, I mean, we're gonna have guys up there already, so I don't want us to spend this money, and then, you know, two years from now, we have to borrow guys up there.
Well, actually, that's probably what will happen. By my understanding, it was always planned that once the new addition was complete, then we would pivot back to the old courthouse and do a refresh of that building. And so, I was, my understanding was that the remaining issues with the roof would be addressed at that time. As you know, I've only been involved in this since January, but that was my understanding. Yes, so if you guys know more than I don't know.
I'd like to take a look at, uh, replacing the whole roof on the existing courthouse.
Uh, now? I- is that something the full Board wants to do? I mean, I can go ask, but that's a big change.
Well, yeah, of course, or, I just wanna research it and, and get a price.
Okay, I, I mean, is that something the rest of you are looking for from me? I can ask questions.
Yeah, I mean, I figured this was already handled, that's why I was asking my questions, but, uh, I mean, that's, that's fine.
Okay, all I know is what I heard before, I was not involved, so I, I can at least find out, bring back some information.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want us to be putting like a Band-Aid on a bigger problem, or, um-
I don't think that this forty-eight thousand is a Band-Aid, I think it is a-
It's a must fix.
Uh, yeah, something we have to do, and it won't be done poorly.
Yeah.
Uh, but it will not be the whole roof.
Right, right.
It'll be the back section.
Okay.
And they showed me pictures of it, and it looked horrible. I understood why they thought it was more than nineteen years old, I'm like, no, I remember, they did this roof when I was here, and Christie took her about ten minutes to find it for me. Yeah, it was done in two thousand six, in the summer, so, um, I'll be happy to get that information and let you know.
But in the meantime- Do you wanna still move forward, though, with this, this one section?
Yeah.
Mr. Dorak, yeah, that would be my, my suggestion as well, so let's move to approve, uh, number thirty-five.
Thank you. Number thirty-six, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the request for partial payment number twenty for Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Giaga County Courthouse Expansion G M P Phase One and Phase Two expenses in the amount of five hundred seventy-two thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and five cents.
So, does that, the total price, um, it looks like it's just north of twenty million, does that include the change orders today, or I assume not?
I do, I would assume not also.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm, and then, can you also confirm that N B five has reviewed this invoice?
Oh, yeah, I never bring anything to you until N B five and T D A have reviewed and said, yeah.
Perfect, all right, so I move to approve thirty-six.
Second.
Mr. Spudler?
Hi.
Mr. Brink?
Hi.
Mr. Spudler?
Hi.
Uh, the last item is the Commissioner's Office and I am requesting the board approve the request from the Assistant County Administrator Linda Burhenny to be reclassified from full-time to part-time, thirty-two hours per week, effective May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. And again, this is for the summer anyway, so that I can babysit my grandkids, if you don't mind. Well, please approve it.
I was gonna make a faith motion, but I'm going to deny, but I, all right, I'll move to approve thirty-seven.
Second.
Mr. Spudler?
Hi.
Mr. Brink?
Hi.
Mr. Spudler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, uh, board discussion, very long meeting today. I, I don't have anything to bring, bring up, discussion.
I do, I mean, sorry, guys, I'll be fast. Um, first thing, just wanted to say welcome to Amy and, um, I'm super excited for your role and, uh, it's a big job, but you're the undeniable choice and, uh, look forward to the future with you at the helm. At the same time, I wanna, uh, acknowledge Linda and Christie, who really picked up the slack, um, did a lot of work, and the other staff, I know there are other directors, uh, when we didn't have a, an act, a, a county administrator and, um, you guys never complained, I never, at least not to me, I never heard anyone complaining, I never heard anyone say, this isn't my job. They just got right in there, they served the people, they did it professionally, uh, and so thank you for that, you guys. Uh, round of applause for me, everybody did a really great job these past few months. Um, so that, that's just more personal note. We filed the comments with the P C O regarding the closure of the Middlefield Service Office, so that was handled a couple of weeks ago, but we haven't had sessions since, so I just wanted to let you know that that is in, uh, first energies-based distribution rate. Case and something that the P U C O will, um, will look at when they're determining first energies rates. And then finally, I was in D C last week for the, uh, White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, uh, they had what they call their White House Leadership Conference for Ohio. They're doing a series of these conferences for different states, um, inviting county commissioners, and then we also had a few state legislators as well. This was, Ohio was actually the first, the first, uh, state to have their conference, so we, uh, we kicked it off at the, at the White House. Um, we heard, we had a, a bunch of briefings from senior members of the Trump administration, we heard from, uh, Ca- Commerce Secretary Lutnik, uh, Labor Secretary Chavez, Head Secretary, uh, Turner, and then we also heard from other senior, uh, officials from the Department of Agriculture, Transportation, Justice, Defense, Energy, and so forth, and, um, I can, if, you know, if anyone has questions about specific goals of the administration that were discussed, I can talk about that, but I would say just, you know, broadly, they really wanted us to know that the Trump Administration is listening to local governments, they know that we are the boots on the ground, we really hear more from the people um, than they do in D C, and so they want to make sure that they're bridging that gap of communication so that their policies reflect um, what's actually happening in our communities. There was a lot of talk, somewhat amusingly, because there were, um, urban counties represented, including Cuyahoga, but there was, there was a lot of talk about, um, rural communities, rural prosperity, and like the Trump Administration's commitment, um, to those communities, particularly because his win didn't come from the cities. Um, it came from communities just like ours, so they are really, um, focusing on that, on the administration. I think on the negative side, there was a lot of, a lot of talk, not a lot of, um, how is this, these things actually gonna be implemented? Um, but, you know, they just kick things off, so, uh, I'll give them some grace there. I did bring up already with, um, the administration, uh, one issue in Georgia County, which is the federal inspections that our county jail has to go through to house, um, ICE inmates. So of course, our county jail has to go through, uh, state inspections that make it sufficient to, uh, house or to detain, um, American citizens, but then we have to go through all these other additional steps to house ICE detainees. So that's been, um, a beneficial relationship with the county and I think the federal government, but it is a burdensome one, um, on our sheriff's office. So I brought that up to them, uh, because I do think that's in line with the Trump Administration's, um, some of their priorities. And, oh, and we get to see President Vance's office.
Vice President.
Vice, Vice President, maybe, maybe I, uh, spoke too soon.
Slow down.
Yeah, but yeah, we got to, we got to see his office and, uh, the pin I'm wearing is, has the Vice Presidential Seal that they gave all of us, it's kind of fun little thing.
Thank you.
That's it.
Representing Georgia County.
Yeah, it was a, it was a really fun experience, so glad I went.
We'll move into, uh, public comment now. State your name, please.
Yes, Diane Jones, of the Township. Uh, discussion was made about, uh, P U C O hearings, uh, and testimonies from the three major utility companies. Um, and, um, I was fortunate to be able to follow one day's hearings. Um, perhaps you can tell me if there will be any more and when we will have a final judgment regarding four cases that the utility companies filed, uh, for requests and rate increases, et cetera, et cetera.
You didn't mean the fir- First Energy Utilities, or are you talking about
First Energy, yeah, specifically First Energy, but also, you know, um, Toledo Energy, Toledo, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, so they're under First Energy, Ohio Edison, C E I, those are all under First Energy.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure about that, Diane, but I will look into it and I can get back to you when, um, so, so you wanna know when the, I mean, you never know, it's basically like when a judge is gonna rule on something, you just never know.
It just comes up like that?
No, so you kinda just have to watch the docket, put a, put a Google News alert on and
Okay, but is there a way I can follow it on, on Google or anywhere else?
Um, so I, I, so I don't know the answer to that, I, like, I have a, an account with the P U C O and so I get docket updates, but I don't know if a average citizen can
I mean
can get those alerts, but you might be able to, it's called, I don't remember what it stands for, but it's a D I S, it's their D I S, that is a system, is what I get, my alerts through.
Well, well
So if you look, if you went on the
I was just hoping to hear a final outcome.
Yeah.
Uh, one way or the other, to know a little bit better out of plan, but, um, a lot of very, very intriguing and interesting and important testimony, extraordinary.
Yeah, I can find out when, when that decision is expected, but I mean, electric breaks are gonna spike just in, just in June, I mean, next month, because of capacity costs are gonna go up. So capacity is kind of the, um, is one component of your electric bill and it's, it's essentially building the church for Christmas. So they have to build the electric distribution infrastructure for the time when the electric grid peaks. And, and so that, that charge is your capacity charge, and those costs are gonna go way up again.
Nice.
Anastasia Nicholas, Sugar and Valley Times reporter, it was someone mentioned the burden on the sheriff's office, so I wanted to ask any input on the A C L U lawsuit from all of you, since it's part of the county with the sheriff.
Well, I, I think it's amazing that, uh, I think pretty close to day one, since this, uh, Safety Center was built, soon after that, it took, they took on ICE, uh, prisoners, which helped us pay the, uh, jail off a little bit sooner. And, uh, all of a sudden, because of this talk and hype, uh, about ICE prisoners, then A C L U figured it was perfect opportunity to have a lawsuit against Georgia County and that there's one or two other counties in the state of Ohio. So I just think it's, uh, frivolous that, uh, A C L U would, would do this, but, but then again, they have the right to sue anybody, so that's my comment.
Yeah, I mean, I, we probably shouldn't comment on that too much since it's pending litigation. I mean, I personally don't think it's a frivolous lawsuit, I do think, um, that the court will need to decide if these documents need to be released. I have, my understanding is the federal government does not want them to be released. Um, and so we, that relationship with the federal government in housing our elec- our ICE detainees is an important one, and so, um, we're trying to be good partners in that relationship.
Anybody else? Okay, I move to adjourn. Second.
All right.
Bye.